Welcome to the CCTA Wake Up Call Show. And I'm going to introduce myself as Bob Griswold. We're joined together with a whole different crew than normal. Again, I'm Bob Griswold.
Mary Griswold.
Damon King.
Michelle Morrow.
Paul Hill.
Patty Mason.
Now, I need to do a disclaimer. First off, CCTA is a 501(c)(3) organization. We are not allowed to endorse candidates. But we can invite candidates to come and express their positions. And we can challenge them in their what they're doing. And to anybody out there that is a candidate that wants to come and join us, please come and sit with us.
You can let us know. You can leave a comment at the cctaxpayers.com website and just say, I'd like to come on the show and give my position. And you will be more than welcome. We do not endorse candidates. We do not endorse parties. But we feel pretty strongly about issues.
Or write an email to bob@cctaxpayers.com. We'd love to hear from you. And Michelle has come down from Cary and is a candidate. And so, welcome, Michelle. I think we're going to be here to hear a little bit about what you're saying. And also, we have another candidate here. Patty is a candidate. And so, let's go for it.
Yes, thank you so much for having me. I am from Cary and I am running to be the next State Superintendent of Public Instruction, which is an actual statewide council of state position. And I want to get back to the basics of education. I believe that we need to train up our kids to be productive members of society, critically thinking, and ready to enter into the workforce. Or if they're prepared to go into college. But we really need to get rid of the indoctrination that's happening and the politically charged and the racially divisive and the sexually explicit and the academically weak content that is really limiting the future of our children. And I think, quite honestly, the future of all of us here in North Carolina.
You know, we're in a situation now where, again, we rely on the public education system an awful lot. And yet, within the last couple of years, a lot of people have bailed out from that system. Why would they bail out?
Well, when you have almost 50% of our students that cannot read or do math at grade level, I think parents are concerned that their kids are not going to be ready.
Our little group that does oversee, we did a comparison. We took the 2020 Census survey. And before COVID really took effect, 20% of the eligible kids in the county were not going to public school. After the window opened, we're now missing 30% of the eligible kids in public education.
Wow.
They're going somewhere.
I have a question, and I don't know if anybody has the answer to this. Where does North Carolina rank in the nation in terms of its public schools?
Now, we, the most recent, we were 15th in the nation.
I don't mean to be rude, but that says bad things about the general state of education in the nation.
It really does. It really does. And if you, but if you think about this, North Carolina has been rated number one as a place to do business, right? And to have a new business. Number one as a place to live. We are number one on the Eastern Seaboard for places to vacation. So that does beg to differ. Why are we at the top of our game in all of these other areas and yet 15th?
Yeah, we should be, we should be doing better. If we're being successful in business and economy, we should also be successful in education because businesses won't be able to find employees if we do not get our Education Act in order.
And that's interesting that you bring that up. Because my opponent right now, the current Superintendent of Public Instruction, in an article in the Charlotte Observer in January of '22, so now it's been two years ago, she stated that while we have such great influx of excellent job opportunities that only 25% of North Carolinians are going to be able, are equipped to take those jobs. So what's happening is that these businesses are actually bringing their own employees from other places around the country in order to fill those spots and to come in.
Wow.
Well, you can see that by our population growth, in which we're growing very rapidly.
Yes.
And I can say from experience, I went to elementary school in North Carolina and then moved north. And I had, I've heard all my life that southern schools aren't very good. Well, it was very interesting. I was about four years ahead of myself in English, and I was about three months behind in math. But the background that the North Carolina schools gave me was phonics for reading, which unfortunately is not always taught now. And they also did a lot, and this is way back in the age of dinosaurs, but they also did a lot with music. And learning to read music is a skill that carries over to other areas. So, I mean, I can talk about elementary school in North Carolina in Greensboro during the '50s and say good things.
And funny you say that, music can lead to other things. I used to work as an engineer for the National Security Agency. It turns out musicians make the best cryptographers.
And programmers.
Well, I will say math, math skills are incredible, too, when you, when you know music and just the accounts of music. But I'll say this, in the 1950s, the United States had one of the strongest public educational systems in the world. And we have fallen far short of that right now.
And I had to do a paper of that when I went to teacher's school. And it turns out in the 1950s, the control of the schools was more at the local level. And now, and the further you move from the local level, the steeper the performance of the students goes down.
Now, we've only been down here about 10 years from, from New England. And it's funny, one of the first things that we got to do when we came down here was to help fight Common Core. And we were up at many, many of the hearings up there in the legislature and the committee hearings. And I'm going to say, we attended more hearings than most of the legislators did. So it was quite a, quite a sight to be, to be there. And to understand, I think it was Dr. Milgram, I think, said at the time, with Massachusetts math, I think it was, and Minnesota English, English language.
I think it was the other way around, but either way.
Okay, well, either way, if you took those states individually, one in English language and the other one in math, if you took them away from the United States and just put them as if they were their own country, they would have been number one in math and number one in English.
Incredible.
In the world. And what did we do? We threw all those standards out.
And I will say that part of the reason is, what's happening in North Carolina is happening around the country. And this is because it's the U.S. Department of Education who is now setting the standards. So when, to Patty's point, what used to be very done locally, I mean, you go back even farther when it was a one-room schoolhouse, right? And we managed to raise the founders of our nation who are able to write the greatest, you know, government document in the history of the world. And many of them only had seven or eight years of formal education, right? But they were taught the proper thing. So we don't need to recreate the wheel. We need to go back to what works because our children have not changed. We are still the same human, you know, human people.
God has not re-architected the human being.
That's true.
We're still his architecture.
I want to go back to the Common Core thing for just one minute. Common Core was adopted in a lot of states. But it was very interesting to me that shortly after it was adopted, one of the wealthier Boston suburbs, and I'm talking maybe eight years ago, when houses in that suburb were valued at about $800,000, that was their median house price. So this was, this wasn't the lower-end district.
Right.
Their school committee threw out Common Core because those people wanted their kids educated. They wanted their kids to be as successful as they were. And that was a local board that said, no, we're not doing this.
And if you, if you look at Common Core, so you can look back in the last about 12 years, and about every three years, the U.S. Department of Education comes up with some new idea that they want to have us implement in the public school system. And Common Core was one of them. And then you went to SEL, right? And then you went to CRT. And now it's the DEI program. And what's wrong with this is, in North Carolina, over 60% of our state budget goes to education. 60%. So last year, it was over $10 billion being spent in, in our students. We're looking at, that's an average of $11,000 per student, with many of the actual rural counties getting upwards of $15,000 and $16,000 per student. So you look at that, but then you think, okay, only 10% of our entire educational budget, minus grants, you can apply for grants and whatnot. But only 10% is coming from the federal government. But you know what comes with that 10%? A bunch of hooks, a bunch of carrots. And what they say is, you cannot have this money unless you have this department. So they just keep adding on. You needed to have all of these departments, right? And now the DEI department, just for an example, in Wake County, we only get in Wake County $2.1 million in 2022 of federal money. 1.3 million was spent on the salaries of the DEI staff.
Wow.
That is salaries. That is not counting the benefits packages, which we all know for state employees are often more of an expense than the salaries themselves. So we cannot find a dollar from this federal money that's actually made it to the classrooms, to resources for teachers, to actually impact better educational outcomes for our students.
And that's concentrating on soft skills, not the hard skills, which is what the public school system is charged to do.
That's exactly right.
My question is, if the states can be sovereign in the control of many other facets of operating as a state, why can't we depart from the U.S. Department of Instruction?
Well, we need to, but here's the, here's the problem. Everybody goes, money, money, we won't have any money. And that's why we need somebody that's going to get into the DPI and is going to get someone from Dale Falwell's Treasury, which is what I'm going to do, his Treasurers Department. And we're going to go through with a fine-tooth comb. And we're going to figure out where do we save this money? Where do we repurpose it to be, have a practical and a measurable academic success for our students?
And the federal money is only 10%. I used to run the IT budget process at NSA. We took a, we forced a 10% cut. Nobody missed it.
Yep.
Folks, we're going to take a quick break to hear from our sponsors and supporters. Again, thank you for listening to the CCTA Wake Up Call Show.
Torque Transmission and Automotive Repairs, the transmission physician in the New Bern area. If you're experiencing transmission problems, call Charles Grover at 252-637-2399. Or stop by the shop on 17 South in New Bern. Torque can install a new or recondition transmission, or they can rebuild your transmission if that's what you prefer. See Torque for a variety of minor automotive repairs like brakes, tune-ups, and water pump. You can count on Torque Transmission and Automotive Repair.
The God and Country Christian Alliance has a simple mission, but it is a profound one. They want to inform and educate the public on issues of moral and political concern. They want to restore the Judeo-Christian values upon which this nation was founded to all levels of government. And they want to encourage and activate pro-family voters. Simple, but not easy. The God and Country Christian Alliance meets the third Monday of every month at Moore's Barbecue on MLK in New Bern. Meetings begin promptly at 7:00 p.m. and end by 8:30. To enjoy dinner with the group before the meeting, arrive between 6:00 and 6:30. Both the food and the company are good. Meetings include speakers and discussion, and their annual banquets are legendary. Join them on the third Monday of each month for a refreshingly candid view of the world and our place in it.
Just who are these people doing this CCTA program? They're people like you, a photographer, someone that ran their own business, someone retired from the military. Just people in the community that love this country and have a desire to do their part to lower taxes and shrink government, to protect individual liberty, and to preserve the U.S. Constitution and free enterprise system. We welcome you to come out to a meeting. If you like what you see and hear, there's a place where you can contribute to the cause. To learn more, go to cctaxpayers.com. That's cctaxpayers.com. The group meets every third Tuesday at Stanley Hall Ballroom in downtown New Bern to enjoy a fantastic speaker and report on CCTA activity since the last meeting. If you've been disappointed with rising taxes and government intrusion, don't just complain. Join Coastal Carolina Taxpayers Association and make your voice heard.
Welcome back, and thank you for listening to our sponsors and supporters. I'm going to go to Mary.
Michelle, how would you go about detaching us from federal funds?
That's a great question. So the first thing we need to do, there needs to be a firewall, but we really need to get people who are excellent at budgeting and auditing. And I would like to go with, Dale Falwell has done an amazing job as the Treasurer of North Carolina.
Yes, he has.
And finding ways to save us money, finding ways actually to support state employees. That's been his passion. And so, I'd like to find, if he is not our nominee, I'd like to ask him to come on board. If he is the nominee for governor, I'd like to ask him who he would trust within his Treasury Department that might be able to help us. Because 60% of our, you know, of our budget is a big deal. But we need to, we need to streamline. We need to find where are the things that we have just assumed, well, we started this program back in 2005, and so we need to keep it going. That's not what we do. We try something, and if it doesn't have the intended impact, then we go back and we say, that didn't work, so let's, let's find out what we're going to do next.
Let's call zero-based budgeting.
That's right.
Right, zero-based budgeting. And we need to tie each budget item to a requirement with metrics that we can measure our forward progress on. And it, so it's the basic project management of requirements, schedule, and budget. And they all need to be tied together. And there needs to be metrics and accountability and review.
The basic definition of immortality is any federal program.
Right.
Well, you know, as-
I've killed a couple. But I want to ask you about the student to administration ratio, how that has changed in recent years.
Yes, well, yes, that's true. It's even the teacher to administration, right? I mean, we are in a severe teacher crisis here in North Carolina. And while people want to say that it all has to do with, with pay for teachers, I am all in favor of paying teachers a living wage. I would like to see the, you know, our teacher salary be one of the top in the nation. Why? Because I think we need to attract more men into instruction, especially in the middle schools and the high schools. We are dealing with so many young men that are coming from single-parent homes, and they need to have mentors within the school system.
Can we find a way to attract people who have been trained in a specific field that maybe don't have the full teacher background, but have the knowledge of that field to get them into the classroom?
Well, I, I begin to wonder about, how many teachers have we put into a position that they're not trained for? We've put them in the wrong specialty in school. And not only are the students floundering, but they, as a teacher, might be floundering when it, when there's another position that I know they're better qualified for.
And we, and the assignment process needs to be happened. When I first moved to North Carolina, I volunteered in the school system. Female engineer, you would think that would be attractive in the math and sciences, right? No, they put me in the history of North Carolina.
You know, I want, I'm going to add-
I learned a lot.
I want to add my two cents because I want to, I want to get into trouble. First off, I dislike the federal teachers' unions. I stand by the teachers themselves. But those unions have, have totally corrupted the process and made it, made it impossible for a good teacher to be a good teacher.
And they've abused their power. They abused their power during COVID when they decided to keep the schools closed, while many of them went on vacation and, you know, just took advantage of the situation.
The one thing Paul and I are advocating for is the teachers are complaining. We need to do a zero-based workload study.
Workload management.
Yeah, we need to find out exactly what we're asking the teachers to do. Because when I looked at the math curriculum in our county, the pacing guide, which we're going to call the curriculum and the book and the standards, the poor teachers having to make all three match. They don't match. And the teacher doesn't have a priority as to what to teach, so they're trying to teach everything. And I know when I taught GED math at the local community college, I don't think my supervisor was very fond of me because I didn't cover everything I was supposed to cover because I was supposed to be math, too. I had kids who really weren't ready for Math 1 and GED. But you teach what you have. And so, I chose to teach a subset of the curriculum, and when we finished, they knew it well. But I didn't teach the whole curriculum. They were going to have to come back again. But, you know, and, and that's the other thing we need to do is teach it well. You don't, you don't need to teach everything. You need to teach a core set very well.
I think, too, when we're talking about academics and what's able to be taught in the classroom, there needs to be a code of conduct in our classrooms. Because this is really one of the main reasons why teachers are leaving. And I'm hearing it all the time. I have personally three friends whose, whose children have gone into teaching in the last five years, and they were done within two and three years. And it's because there is no respect in the classroom and there is no response and backing from the administration.
Correct.
So you're looking at, at children that are in second and third grade that are going up against teachers and telling them, I don't have to do that. And they're cursing at them and they're, and the administrator will say, go to the parent. And the parent is not backing the teacher. The parent is backing their own, their own child. And so, that, when children, when children do not have discipline and when children do not know what to expect and they do not, they cannot trust that the day in the classroom is going to be ordered and it's going to be peaceful, learning and teaching is not happening. And it's not happening in the majority of our schools. And that is the, that is the, one of the core problems. Before you can ever deal with the, the various array of abilities in a classroom that, that the teachers are having to address, you have to at least have their attention.
Yeah, and, and you're right. The teacher is disarmed. When I went to school, there were like 30 kids in each classroom. If there was a conflict in school, okay, I was guilty until proven innocent, but I still got the punishment for being in the situation. Today, the teacher's guilty.
Right.
And there is no until proven innocent.
That's right. And, go ahead.
And kids learn better in a secure environment. If they're feeling like, you know, this kid next to me is doing whatever.
Yep.
They're not going to learn. They're going to be distracted. They're not going to be paying attention. And the other thing indirectly related to this, I know that we have over-medicated our little boys, and we have accused them of ADD, sometimes correctly, sometimes incorrectly. And I will say this because I can look at my husband's family, and he will agree with this, we can point to three generations of ADD. And nobody's been drugged. We learned about athletics.
That's right.
We learned about, you know, at one point, one of my grandkids, his mother told his teacher, if he, if he seems to be getting antsy, make him go out and run around the building three times.
Right.
Then bring him back in, and he'll be fine. And we've taken recess away, which is one of the outlets for these kids.
That's right.
And we've, we've not been smart.
No.
And that's, that would be my word.
There are techniques, because I was diagnosed as ADHD. And John Hopkins ended up getting involved because I refused to do the medicine. And work was a little upset over that. But my blood pressure shot up, and I wasn't going to take medicine for medicine. Anyway, the John Hopkins person said, she's functioning. She's a very functional ADHD. We, we need to work with that.
That's right.
Yeah.
And I think something else that we need to recognize about that is, we have, we have become a nation who many of our children have been in an institutional setting since they were six weeks old.
Yes.
Okay? When all of us were growing up and we were able to just have our day, right? And to use our imagination and to, you know, if we needed to go lay down, we went and laid down. We were with our parents all day long, or one of our parents all day long. Like, we need to recognize that after you've been in this strict environment of this happens at this hour, and this happens at this moment, and this happens at that moment, you think about it from six weeks until the time you're 10, they're kind of done, right? I mean, like, they're done sitting still. And to your point, in, in Finland and in Denmark, they do not start any formal instruction until the age of seven. You don't have preschools. You don't have daycares. The kids are allowed to be outside. They're allowed to be exploring because they understand in the nature of children, and especially in boys, that they are not capable physically and emotionally and intellectually of sitting for eight to 10 hours. And think about it, many of these kids now, because of the way that we are districting them only by the color of their skin, they're spending over an hour on a bus in the morning and at night, all right? And now, in Wake County, we have such a shortage of bus drivers, and everybody wants to say it's pay. It's not pay. There's no control on the school bus. So these, these poor bus drivers are trying to maneuver through traffic that's not paying any attention, right? While they have kids going nuts in the backseat of the, in the backseat of the bus. And who's going to be the adult responsible when someone gets hurt in the back of the bus? It's going to be the bus driver. We've got video cameras on our buses, and they focus on the bus driver. Right? I mean, why aren't they focused on the back and what's going on in the backseat of the bus? So what I'm saying is, and now, we have so few bus drivers in Wake County, they're staggering when the kids are getting picked up. So you don't think it's distracting to have a, a child, a group of kids coming into the school 45 minutes late? And then a group of kids leaving the school 45 minutes early every day? It makes no sense.
I love, I love where you went with the school bus. In high school, when I was in high school, we had student drivers.
Whoa.
And I drove for the junior high across town. And the previous driver allowed them to smoke a couple of cigarettes, do some things. And they were a little loose. Well, being the drum major of the marching band, I was very firm and disciplined. I mean, at that time, you know, you gave pushups to anybody that just didn't do what they were supposed to do when you called commands in the band.
Right.
And so, you know, driving their bus, a couple of the band students that were in the band with me were like, I was like, hey, who has the cigarette on the bus? And they had, somebody, nobody answered. What does it matter to you? And one of the girls behind me, it's in our clarinet line, said, oh my God, they really don't know who they're talking to. So I asked one more time. I said, who has the cigarette on the bus? And I'm a 17-year-old senior in school. And none of your business. So I gently pulled the bus in the middle of the road in the neighborhood, locked it down right in the middle of the road, turned the bus off. I said, now I'm going to throw the key out in the grass. And I said, now you got one more time to tell me it's none of my business. And when I get done wiping you up off of this bus, we're going to, you know, we can deal with that later. I said, I'm not afraid of losing my job. But the discipline in school back then was totally different.
That's right.
And the student drivers did a much better job at disciplining these children back when I was in school in the 80s than versus now we have these adults out here driving and they just crack up and walk away. They're afraid to say anything to the kids.
Yep.
Which leads us to a next subject. Way back when I went to school, there were 30 kids per school. Now we're saying we only need six, or per class, now we're saying we need only 16 kids per class because of the discipline issue. That's not right.
Right.
The reason we're going to 16, our kids per class is because of special ed. When a child has a special education need, we want to mainstream them. We don't want to give them special education.
It's true.
And part of the discipline problem is the other students know how to light up that child with a special education problem to cause a discipline problem in the class. So a class is canceled.
That's right.
Again, we're going to take a quick break to hear from our sponsors and supporters. Thank you again for listening. This is the CCTA Wake Up Call Show.
At Professional Auto Service, keeping vehicles in top form and running well isn't just their business, it's the passion of folks who work there. If bail and wire and duct tape is good enough, don't go near them. But if you take pride in your vehicle and reliability is important, go to 2215 Country Club Road in New Bern and let Professional Auto take care of your vehicle. You'll be pleased. That's Professional Auto Service, Country Club Road, New Bern.
Moore's Old Time Barbecue is slow-cooked and smoked over hickory and the tradition of the Moore's family for over 70 years. Moore's also serves fried chicken, cooked order seafood, and homemade side dishes. Open seven days a week in New Bern, Winterville, Moorhead City, Swansburg, and Jacksonville. Moore's will cater and deliver anywhere you want your truly traditional barbecue and fixins delivered. And remember, if it's not Moore's, it's less.
The County Compass is a rapidly growing, free, weekly newspaper throughout eastern North Carolina. At The County Compass, we believe small business is the future of our great nation. Many small business owners have discovered that an ad in The County Compass each week is the most effective, the most affordable way to reach thousands of readers from all walks of life. At The County Compass, we focus entirely on local and regional news, coverage of important issues that directly affect your life. At The County Compass, we love our readers and we love our advertisers. This Thursday and every Thursday at more than 750 distribution points throughout eastern North Carolina, pick up your free copy of The County Compass newspaper.
Since 1952, the North Carolina Fisheries Association has been working to ensure access for fishermen and consumers to enjoy fresh local seafood. The North Carolina Fisheries Association is for fair, science- The North Carolina Fisheries Association is for fair, science-based fisheries management for commercial and recreational fishermen. If you agree with this philosophy, become a member. For more information, log on to ncfish.org. For fresh North Carolina seafood, there's no better place than B&amp;J Seafood, Highway 70 East in New Bern.
Thank you again for listening to our sponsors and supporters. Again, CCTA Wake Up Call. I'm going to go to Mary.
What are the goals that you would set for students by the time they complete sixth grade?
Well, I'd like to see even before they leave elementary school, math and reading mastery. And my take for this is twofold. One is children naturally, once they get to middle school, they're not going to admit that they don't know something, right? Children in elementary school, feel free to say, "I don't understand that. Please help me with that." So that's our opportunity, right, that we're going to miss out on once they get to middle school and high school. They're just going to fake it till they make it or they're going to cheat or, you know, they're just going to be pushed along because we need to get money and we need to get funding and we need our data to look right, right? And if we're all honest with one another, that's why we have a 93% graduation rate and a 50% rate of seniors being able to pass their end-of-grade tests, okay?
You know, you talk about coming out of, like, coming out of fifth grade and again, now let's do that math without the calculator?
Yep. How about that? How about we actually have some math facts? And I think we need to get back to when math is objective, that there is a right and a wrong answer. And the rest of the world is doing this and they are bypassing us, okay? And children in their elementary years, they are sponges. They want to learn things, right, by memorization. That is actually an incredible skill for young people that we tend to lose as we get older. But I will say this too. Not only is it going to impact their ability to pursue anything once they get into sixth grade, but it's also going to give us an idea as the school system, as educators and as teachers, of what their bent is, right? All children are not excellent at math. All children are not excellent at English. They need to know that that's okay. We're going to help you where you're weak. We're going to encourage you where you're strong. So when we get into the middle school grades, we should already have them looking at tracks that they might want to follow. What are your interest groups, right? Let's coordinate with businesses that are already in all of our different districts and say, "We're working these kids toward a work-study program, toward an internship. Those kids that don't think that they want to go on and get a four-year degree, let's get them prepared and let's help our businesses to have people that they're training up, that they can end up graduating on a Friday and starting work on Monday morning."
Exactly what other countries that are excelling are doing. Exactly what they are doing.
And we have the ability to do this. We have the ability to do this. It's just prioritizing how we're using our money and how we're using our classroom time.
The fear is maybe we mistrack a student. Well, that's okay. You can fix that.
Absolutely. I mean, how many of us went to school for a different degree and we're not even working in it? I mean, that's a pretty common thing, right? I mean, you're not stuck in what you're going to do.
It's almost the other way around.
Right, right. Exactly.
And do you really want to drive over a bridge built by a kid who thought two and two is five because that felt good?
That's right. No, you don't.
Well, sorry.
No, you go ahead.
Well, we see that here in the sense that I think the graduation, that graduates who attend four-year college, not necessarily ever get out of it, but at least attend is like 38%.
Right.
That means 62% of the students don't do this. Now, they may end up going to some other kinds of trainings and stuff like that. The CTE program here in Craven County, reasonably good.
Right.
And what we laugh about it, if you go to our website, which is a beautiful artistic layout website, impossible to negotiate, but it's okay.
But it looks good.
You can't find it, right?
Can't find the CTE program.
If I told you who ran the CTE program or I explained, you know, 15 different ways to locate it, you're not going to find it.
Really?
What does CTE stand for?
Career Technical Education.
Thank you.
And see, I tutor and the student I'm tutoring, she's college material. She's a very bright student. However, I want to track her into the CTE program because if she graduates high school with the CTE certificates, she can get more than a minimum wage job and earn her way through college if she goes and not have the debt. Now, I want to track her into it so she starts ninth grade in that, but I can't find it.
Wow. Well, I'll tell you too, when you think about this, the reason why colleges, we're really suffering, okay? We could go back even to the U.S. Department of Education because in 2012 is when they took over the funding for any scholarships or any funding, right? The FAFSA that you have to go through in order to get funding. And what's wrong with that is they increase the cost of going to a university because they're not dumb. Like, I mean, anything that the government puts their hand to, it ends up becoming more expensive and more, you know, and less efficient. And that's what's happened as well. Because I went to UNC Chapel Hill, right? And when I went to school, it was $5,000 a year for everything, for room, board and for tuition. You mean to tell me, you need to tell me that in four years, I ended up with a BS in nursing where I could step out that door and get myself a job that I was able to complete, be completely financially independent, right? And work up the ranks in the nursing system. And you look at that and you go, "Are you mean to tell me our universities are now giving us a 400% better education? It's not flushing out in who we're graduating."
And that's why we need to attach performance metrics. And what's interesting is in my old job, I had to be familiar with looking up the law because the law is ambiguous sometimes, but it's not if you diagram the sentences and which I used to make engineers do. Anyway, Title 20 is the title on education. Well, up until four years ago, it was very interesting. Title 20, you look at it and Section 1 was all crossed out. And there was a note at the bottom of it that said, "Our goal legislatively is to get rid of the Department of Education. We'll have Department of Education run by an executive order that Nixon wrote in 1974." And the whole reason they unscratched it out and kept it is because the only way the federal government can force money down the pipe to get what they want is through the Department of Education. So they can't get rid of the Department of Education because they want control of education at the federal level. And back in the 1950s, we did better because control was local.
That's right.
It was local control.
And constitutionally, there is no premise for the federal government having anything to do with education.
One of the things too about local control is that you tend to get parents involved.
Yes.
And I think one of the problems that we have now, and COVID was an interesting wake-up call because COVID allowed parents to know what was going on in the classroom and there were some repercussions for that. But generally speaking, I don't think parents have a clue as to what's going on in their schools. And I'm not sure, again, in the world that we live in where you have two parents working and everybody being tired at the end of the day, I'm not sure they can be involved.
That's right. And I often say...
I think they can be involved. I think we have to be creative and find different ways and different avenues for them to be involved. And I think they need to be involved. It's their kids.
Yes.
They know their kids best. And the school, public school system, we need a strong public school system. We need school choice. But the school system is not everything to everybody.
Well, and this is interesting that you bring up school choice because while I am 100% in agreement that parents should be the ones that are choosing what happens with their kids, we need to check and see because not only did the U.S. Department of Education want to financially benefit from being in charge, but we need to understand it's also indoctrination of what their vision for the United States is, which if we look at what their vision for education and what our vision as conservatives that believe that our kids should be critically thinking, mature, you know, ethically strong, right, and hardworking, it's completely different. It's not, we're not even, you know, shooting at the same wall, right?
Which is why...
With their darts. They're faced this way and we're completely turned around.
Which is why they unscratched Title 20.
Right.
Because they want to control the money because then they can control what's being taught.
Right.
Something like the golden rule.
Right. He owns the gold, right?
He's got the gold, got the rule.
And unfortunately...
But unfortunately, we own the gold.
Well, unfortunately, we've trained up an entire, you know, couple generations of children to believe that it is the school's job to raise up their kids, just like it was the preschool's job, right, to watch their kids, just like it was the, you know, the daycare's job, that our job is to go out and to make the money and then other people are going to raise our kids. And we really have to kind of deprogram from that opinion. And that's going to be difficult.
Yes.
But if you start, if you start making consequences within the classroom, that's why I say, if I'm in office, it will be a code of conduct and it's not just for the teachers and the students, it's going to be for the parents as well.
Right.
And they recognize that ultimately you are responsible for the training up of your children and our educational system is only helping you with one portion of it.
Right. And that's why I was saying, the parents have to be involved. That's critical.
Yes.
And we can accept nothing less.
I agree.
I don't know who said it, but there's a quote, "She who rocks the cradle rules the world."
Yep.
Because what we put into our children is what the next generation will be. And mom and dad are the best qualified people to put things into their children.
And for example, I have no kids. Why am I running? Because the kids are our future. There's going to come a day when I can't participate in society because I'm too old. I need those kids to know how to be critical thinkers and love our country so that what I have planned can happen. Those kids have to succeed.
That's right.
Also, our education, and this sounds silly, determines our real estate values.
Yep.
Because you don't want to move into a place that has bad schools.
You know, we're also, we're dealing with what I'm going to call a mobile society because you used to have multiple generations that lived near each other. So you had the, whether it was the parents or the grandparents or whatever else to help. We're a mobile society. So getting back to having someone within the family help to teach and train up a child in the way that they should go, that's a challenge to us.
And we need to accept the challenge.
We need to accept the challenge, belly up to the bar. Folks, again, we're going to take a quick break to hear from our sponsors and supporters. This is the CCTA Wake Up Call Show.
Torque Transmission and Automotive Repairs, the transmission physician in the New Bern area. If you're experiencing transmission problems, call Charles Grover at 252-637-2399 or stop by the shop on 17 South in New Bern. Torque can install a new or reconditioned transmission or they can rebuild your transmission if that's what you prefer. See Torque for a variety of minor automotive repairs like brakes, tune-ups and water pump. You can count on Torque Transmission and Automotive Repair.
Hey, folks. Here's a tip. When you think firearms and ammo, think East 70 Palm. They've been on Highway 70 east of New Bern across from the fairgrounds for 31 years. Drew Preston and his staff know firearms. Gun sales have tripled in under a year and women shooters are the fastest-growing part of their business. Their great inventory, over 300 guns in stock, changes daily. And if you want something they don't have, they'll look for it. New and used rifles, shotguns and pistols. Buy, sell or trade. And they also have mini holsters, scopes and other gun accessories. Every member of the staff is deeply knowledgeable and every one of them is an excellent shooter. So don't just come for the inventory. Come for the thoughtful advice. East 70 Palm, your home for firearms, ammo and answers. Highway 70 East, New Bern, across from the fairgrounds. Moore's Old Time Barbecue is slow-cooked and smoked over hickory and the tradition of the Moore's family for over 70 years. Moore's also serves fried chicken, cooked order seafood and homemade side dishes. Open seven days a week in New Bern, Winterville, Morehead City, Swansburg and Jacksonville. Moore's will cater and deliver anywhere you want your truly traditional barbecue and fixins delivered. And remember, if it's not Moore's, it's less.
Welcome back to the show. Again, thank you for listening to the sponsors, supporters. Michelle, you're up.
Thank you so much. And I just wanted to say, when we're talking about kids and their ability to focus and their ability to, you know, be academically sound and whatnot, I think one of the things that has been a great detriment to our students has been the amount of handheld screen time and just general screen time. It's time for us to get back to having books so that parents can see what their kids are learning. So if you miss something in the classroom, you can actually go home and you can go back and you can review it. And when you're getting prepared for a test, you can go over the entire chapter. Because right now, what we have is not only kids that are not able to focus, but there are, there are great developmental milestones that happen when you are looking at a piece of paper, when you're looking and having to take notes off of a, you know, off of a blackboard or a whiteboard or a screen or whatever it might be on the Teachers Union using, and we're missing that. The one-dimensional, you know, way that you use an iPad is very detrimental to the growth of the developing brain, as well as we know that our kids are not learning the social skills that they need to. It's important to look at someone's face when you're having a conversation with them. We all know as adults that there are things that are being said on a screen that would never be said in the presence of somebody. And we're not teaching our children to take responsibility for the way that they're treating one another. And if we're talking about bullying, we're talking about, you know, everybody's anxiety and their depression and we're isolating our kids. One of the biggest isolators has been these screens. Our kids need to identify with, "I am a student in this classroom and we are all peers and we're all working together for the same goals that everybody would be successful." And it needs to stop being this individualized, you know, this individualized thing that it's just you and a screen and a group of other people on screen.
You know, it's also detrimental to somebody that I'm going to say has a photographic memory. Because if you look at a book and you, "I remembered what was on page 25." And I'm up here 150, well, I got to relate that back to 25 because I will remember something. Now, I don't remember every page, but...
But, and the other thing is, is they need to learn that the computer is a tool.
Yes.
And because as an engineer, okay, we did deal with rocket science. And you had to know whether the answer is right or wrong. A computer, when it adds large numbers and small numbers, will give you the wrong answer. And if we did the wrong answer, okay, you could accidentally knock a Chinese satellite out of their slot up there and that would be kind of a bad thing.
Right.
So you have to know how to do the work yourself and use the computer as a tool. And the worst day my student just had that I'm tutoring and I felt so bad for is she messed up on a midterm and I asked her what went wrong and she said, "The computer gave me the wrong answer." It was a bad tutoring session for her.
Well, and I, go ahead.
There's something...
By the way, if anybody's ever seen a computer give a wrong answer, it is really a light show, okay? They light up like Christmas tree. They don't misad. They just, they just give you the answer that you asked for.
Unless you go back to the 486 chip that had a known deficiency in the chip and knew how to do math incorrectly.
I have a question here. When you're talking about screen times, there is a concept that I've heard about over the years called emotional IQ, which is in some cases, a better measure of the future success of a student than intellectual IQ. Are the screens and the emphasis on screens interfering with the emotional IQ of the students?
100% because you're not interacting with people. You're not learning to read body language. You're not learning to read facial expressions, right? Because that's actually how we end up learning how to limit ourselves, right, and to be self-controlled and even to think about what we're going to say before we say it, right? The screen is not only limiting our ability to pay attention, right? Our attention span has gotten down to practically nothing, but it also is limiting our ability to self-regulate, right? I mean, if you're, you need to learn as a young person. If you don't learn as a young person, you're not going to learn as an adult how to work a room, right? How to feel kind of what the atmosphere is in a room. You're not doing that when you're just focused on a screen.
And there's more communications through non-verbal than through verbal.
Right. Right.
And that's what we're not teaching them, is how to look at the non-verbal communications that are going on in a room.
Well, that really came to the surface with, with the remote learning for, for schools. But also, if you look at the remote work system where folks are working at home, again, they don't have that ability to interact. Now, I had the, I'm going to say, I had the, the quote fortune or misfortune, that where my office was, I heard a lot of competing conversations going on. And with the ADD, I would hear two unrelated conversations. I would get up at my desk and say, "You guys are talking the same thing, but just in different languages," and could get something to work together. Now, if I'm working remotely, I can't do that.
That's right.
I, I had the privilege of writing a module for a therapeutic group of people that were inmates of prison--
Okay.
--right there in Hornet County--
Right.
--for EQ.
Okay.
So when it comes to emotional intelligence, you know, that was something I had to study real hard. And, you know, as a pastor, I reflected back on one of my favorite verses in the Bible, which I say about every verse in the Bible. But today, this is my favorite verse, is Jesus said that "the love of many shall wax cold." And so as I'm writing this, I'm like, "Well, this is really cool because God is going to interact with me while I write this, and he's going to help me along." And he allowed me to reflect back as to why we're now having this issue. The first time I, I remember was when I walked up as a 13-year-old to a teller-two machine, because that's what we called them back then. We called them ATMs.
Right.
A teller-two, First Union Bank. And I walked into that thing, my mom, I had my little paycheck because I worked in a business with my dad. I said, "I'm going to go get me some money out." And when I was getting ready to put that card in, I thought, "Well, this is strange." You know, "God, you said one day that 'the love of many will wax cold as the time draws nearer the end.'" And I said, "Here I am as a 13-year-old getting ready to..." Now, I had this as a 13-year-old--
Wow.
Getting ready to interact with a machine where I don't have to go inside that bank ever again. I can deposit my money here, I can get my money out here. Next thing you know, here we come with cell phones, which started to do different things. But before, you know, as we moved on, here's the self-checkout.
Yep.
And I'm determined mostly not to use the self-checkout so I can be forced to have to interact with someone checking out my groceries.
That's right.
But sometimes for the sake of time, you know, I jump right over there, and then I get this guilty little conscience when I walk out. What am I doing? I vowed not to do this. But then here we have the screen, the too much screen time you're talking about. Now we've isolated ourselves from the interaction and being able to emote with people, being able to understand how to communicate. And a lot of that does have emotional consequences as well, as well as intellectual.
Exactly. And as you both said, the EQ helps determine this, how successful you're going to be because, okay, you hit a, you hit a wall on something. Do you fall apart? Do you throw a hissy fit? Or do you say, "Okay, let's analyze the situation?" And you don't melt. And so the emotional quotient thing is going to say, "How well can you progress?"
Right.
And there used to be this concept that I used to promote, there's mathematical maturity as well as emotional maturity. And unless you have the emotional maturity, you're not going to gain the mathematical maturity to go on to upper math--
Yep.
--because you're going to have to see failure a lot.
One of the things that I have seen, we have a grandson who's a Marine, and he joined the Marines a week after his 18th birthday, and they're paying for his college. So he goes through boot camp, he goes through the next phase, and then he goes through intelligence training, and then he goes back to SUNY Buffalo. And he discovers that he's in a totally different place than his schoolmates. Because this shuffling, mumbling child that went into the Marines came out as someone who stands up straight, looks you in the eye, shakes your hand, and has a very different worldview than the kids he graduated with, from high school with. And he's now much more at home at his reserve meetings than he is with his classmates. So you can teach, I mean, part of that is emotional IQ.
Right.
And part of that was taught by the Marine Corps.
Absolutely. And you know what it is? It's discipline.
Yes.
And we need to learn self-discipline. And here's the thing, we talk about, you know, private schools, and we'd like school choice and all these things. What do they have in common, the ones, the schools that are successful? Not only are they really teaching academics, right? And it's not all of these soft things that you're talking about, right? And all of the, you know, political ideologies and whatnot, but they also have discipline. If you're paying every year, you know that your kids, they know when they're supposed to be at school, and they know that they don't turn stuff in late, and they understand what the consequences are if they get in a fight or if they're disrespectful.
That's the key. The kids are taught responsibility as they go on. For example, our county, one of the high schools, lost the national championship because of lack of attendance and grades. Well, when I went to school, if you wanted to play sports, you took a piece of paper around each week to each teacher, and they wrote your score and attention down.
Wow.
And, and you turned it in to the coach, and that determined whether you were playing that weekend or not. You had the responsibility to show that you met the qualifications.
And it's called accountability.
I proffered that in a Facebook discussion. Oh, my word! You would think I was ending the free world, saying that the kids had to take that responsibility. And we need to teach them that. And that's what we're not doing. So part of the discipline is responsibility. And when I teach math class, I used to teach for inner city up in Maryland, and the kids would go, "We got rights." And I'd go, "You got no rights, so you got responsibility now."
Right.
Yeah. Wow.
And we don't teach that.
That's part of where we are. We've taught this generation that they have rights and freedom.
They're entitled.
But we haven't taught them the responsibilities that go with those things.
Right. And as you, as you talked about earlier, when you were talking about the pharmaceuticals and how many, you know, how many children are now getting medicated younger and younger, you look at that and you think, "What if we taught our kids?" We have taught our students that you are not responsible for yourself, you have a diagnosis. You cannot be held responsible. You are a victim of whatever you have, and here's a pill to fix it. Ah. So that's--
Go.
So that's one of the things that we need to get down to is we need to, we, it is, when we're talking about wanting kids to have good self-esteem, because that's really how this all started, right? We want everybody to feel good about themselves. Well, I say this, there is no better self-esteem than succeeding at something, doing it well and overcoming something that you thought that you would never be able to achieve.
Amen. Like, I was teaching my student Order of Operations, and the joke on her was, she was in sixth grade. I had her doing 10th grade Order of Operations problems at the end. So she was acing it right and left. And when I told her, "No, you're doing 10th grade."
That's right.
She, you know--
That made her day. That made her week.
Right.
Yep.
There's nothing wrong with challenging a child--
That's right.
--as long as I think you need to help them walk through the challenge if they are over-challenged.
I think you're going to find that teachers are having difficulty challenging them because of this workload situation that we have right now, which is why we're trying to look into that.
That's right.
Michelle, I'm going to leave you about the last 50 seconds. Is there anything extra that you want to add to this, to this show? I really want to say thank you very much for coming and just, just general discussions.
Absolutely. Well, thank you so much for having me. I think that there is a great deal of hope in North Carolina. I think we have the means, I think we have the expertise, and I think we have the passion behind us. I think the majority of parents, education is the most uniting issue. It, it's across race, it's across religion, and it is across political spectrum.